Welcome, the meeting will now come to order. If you will, please join Vice Chairman Langley as he does our invocation, and Commissioner Waters will do our pledge of allegiance. Please stand, please.
Let us pray. Turn around, our Father, we are grateful and thankful for the opportunity to assemble here one more time to do the business of your people, God. We count it a privilege and an honor, God, to do what is right for your people. Bless us now, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Just a little bit of housekeeping. If you've got a cell phone, if you will, please either turn it off or silence it, please. At this time, I'd like to ask, is there any commissioner who wishes to make a disclosure regarding any matter that is before the board tonight? Hearing none. Approval of the agenda, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second. Had a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero. Katie? It's now your meeting.
This is the Board Organizational Meeting for the year 2020, and I will take nominations for chairman.
I'd like to nominate Jerry Evans for chairman.
I nominate Stan DeThridge for chairman.
Are there any others? All those that would like to vote for Commissioner Evans, please raise your hand. That's five. All those for Commissioner DeThridge? Two. Commissioner Evans, your chairman for 2020.
Thank you. You going to continue with Vice Chair?
I can now take nominations for Vice Chairman.
I nominate Jerry Langley.
I'll start to say I would second, but I've realized that you don't have to second. Excuse me.
I nominate the conservative Stan DeThridge for Vice Chairman.
Are there any others? All those for Commissioner Langley? All those for Commissioner DeThridge? Commissioner Langley, your Vice Chairman for 2020.
Okay, we'll continue on with the public hearing. I need a motion to go into the first public hearing.
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Roberts?
Good evening. So the first public hearing is to consider a petition to name a private road out of Blunts Creek. A petition was submitted by Tony and Bonnie Lewis to name a private road that is approximately 450 feet in length. It will connect to Jones Road in Blunts Creek and is approximately 840 feet southwest of Jones Road and Flat Swamp Road. The private easement will serve a new three-space minor travel trailer park, which was approved in October of this year, October 18th. And the applicant is building a 20-foot-wide easement consisting of gravel. Advertisement was run in the Washington Daily News on November the 19th and November 26th. Notices were posted at the county courthouse, Brown Library, and the Beaufort County Administrative Offices. I'll open the floor to public comment if there are any.
Would anybody like to come up and speak from the public on this matter? Hearing none, a motion to close.
I move we close the public hearing.
Okay, we're going to public hearing number two, if you would.
All right, the second public hearing is a petition to rename a portion of private road. The petition was submitted by Mr. Edmund Bowers to rename a portion of Herring Club Road, which is approximately 420 feet in length. Connects to Herring Club Road and is a part of Herring Club Road, which also runs perpendicular to the easement. This segment is approximately 475 feet south of the intersection of Herring Club Road and Cody Road. The petition is submitted to correct a road naming error. Staff sees the road naming as being duplicative since the road is perpendicular to the same named road. And Mr. Bowers had submitted the application to reduce any confusion and also to develop additional properties off the private easement. Again, notices advertisements were run in the Washington Daily News on November 19th and November 26th. Public notice was posted in the county courthouse, I'm not sorry, I got it in reverse, in Brown Library and in the Beaufort County Administrative Buildings. If there's any public comments, I'll open the floor to those.
Does anyone like to speak on this matter from the public? Hearing none.
I move we close the public hearing. I second the motion.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. We're now in public comments. Just a footnote on the public comments, we have three minutes. Again, we're here to listen. This is not a town hall meeting, so there'll be no comments from the commissioners. Again, we're just here to listen to what you have to say. First one to speak is Captain Swain. Don't see him. Ms. Mish.
Good evening, Chairman Evans, Commissioners. I'm hopeful the words jail committee on tonight's agenda will set forth earnest actions filled with integrity. Pardon me. After a full year of personal outrage over the disgrace that is our jail, that outrage I hold now marinates in disgust. In this room, I've given one long articulation, the reasons why. But if anyone wants to stop me in public, I'll be happy to tell you what I really think about the problem that is our jail. The moral disengagement we have concerning our jail insinuates we think we have no obligation to ethical standards. We continue to dehumanize those in our jail, and our lack of response is cruel, unreasonable, and decries arbitrary use of power. These actions work at disenfranchising all of us in Beaufort County. We've allowed outrageous and continual spending for jail patch-up on what is in fact a sad, broken, and disgraceful ideology or would-be economic policy concerning our jail. Rather than inform the people of Beaufort County that a new reasonable safety facility could actually mean income through our own safekeeping program outlined in that not-so-long-ago quoted jail report, we continue to line the pockets of our neighboring and outline counties for safekeeping, spending, spending while continually inviting lawsuits. And there it is, foolishly spending and not concerned. There were threats that could take more money out of our pockets when it concerns our sorry jail. We'll have our jail with its shiny new upgraded doors, and we'll continue to provide those in it their rights. And the cycle goes on by us, the morally bankrupt and jail spendthrifts. What kind of sickness has fallen on us, given us dark and prideful souls that would champion such a cruel and inappropriate jail? We need new action to begin on this night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mish. Mr. Ray Lilly?
Commissioners, there is a resolution on today's agenda supporting President Trump and the current ill-conceived impeachment movement for doing nothing more than performing his constitutional duties. The recently-elected Representative Greg Murphy needs to know that Beaufort County, North Carolina, supports President Trump in opposing the liberals and their effort to impeach him in the House of Representatives. I urge this commission to support this resolution and let Representative Greg Murphy, North Carolina's two Republican senators, and the President of the United States know that this Republican majority of Beaufort County Commission does not support the liberals' effort to undo the will of the people, as demonstrated during the 2016 presidential election by delivering 306 electoral votes in the election of President Donald Trump. Failure to support this resolution will demonstrate that the five Republican majority on this commission are something less than advertised. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Okay, we're under items for consent. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second the motion.
Discussion? Favor of approval of the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Five two. Okay, we're down to items for decision. Ms. Roberts, if you'll come back up one more time.
Okay, so the first item for decision is, again, the petition to name a private road submitted by Mr. Tony Lewis and Bonnie Lewis. They've developed a three-lot travel trailer park off their property in Jones Road. They are going to build a private road in accordance with the travel trailer park ordinance. The road will be 20 feet wide and gravel improvement. The road is approximately 450 feet in length. And I did misspeak earlier, the notices were posted in the Beaufort County Courthouse, Blunts Creek Volunteer Fire Department, and the South Side High School. The applicant has proposed three names, which are Tootle Lane, Herbert Lane, and Jungle Lane. Staff has determined the first proposed choice, Tooten Lane, presents a sound-alike with Tooten Road. Staff is recommending the board approves the second choice of Herbert Lane.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we name that the second choice being Herbert Lane.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
This was a travel trailer park?
Correct, a minor travel trailer park.
Now, are they there year-round, or they can put mailboxes, is this in compliance with our park ordinance?
Correct, so they were approved on October the 18th. They went before the building inspector, environmental health, and myself, and we worked with them on the site plans. And we didn't see any issues. The applicant is proposing it to be temporary. He does intend to develop a house on the lot sometime down the line.
So it is in compliance with the trailer park ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Time to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven zero. Ms. Roberts, okay?
Okay, and our second one is renaming of a private road, and it does go through the same process. The petition was submitted by Mr. Edmund Bowers to rename a portion of Herring Club Road. Herring Club Road is outside the ETJ of Washington, just south of 264. The portion he's renaming is a 420-foot length of road, which runs perpendicular to Herring Club Road, same-name road. And the segment is about 475 feet south of the intersection of Herring Club Road and Cody Road. The applicant is proposing the names of Performance Drive, Horsepower Drive, and CB Lane. Staff has determined that there were no duplicates or sound-alike for the first choice of Performance Drive and is recommending that name to the Board of Commissioners.
Motion.
Move.
Second.
Move.
Second, second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Kelly Smith?
Good evening, Commissioners. I come to you tonight with a proposal for us to change banks from our current bank of Wells Fargo for our payee dispersment account. Out of that account at DSS, we serve approximately 60 payee clients. And right now, our average monthly fees on that account are about $375. We have worked with Ms. Anita, the Finance Officer, as well as some others in the Finance Department, as well as some area, we met with three local area banks. First National Bank is able to offer us that account for no charge because of the county's relationship with First National Bank. If you will allow us to change banks from Wells Fargo to First National, that will be about an average annual savings of $4,500.
Yeah, I move, post haste that we allow DSS to use First National Bank as their bank of choice. Second the motion.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero. Katie, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. The town of Bellhaven is looking for appointees for the Bellhaven Planning Board, the Bellhaven Board of Adjustments, and the Bellhaven Board of Adjustments alternate. At this time, I have no recommendations and no volunteers. Didn't know if you had heard of anybody, but they are looking, and we'd like to get that out there.
Commissioner Waters?
Mr. Chairman, I had two people that talked to me, but they both live within the town limits. I don't think they understood that, so I'm just like Katie, I've not had anybody else step to the table.
Anyone else?
I have one question. Do you have to live within the corporate town limits, or can you live within the ETJ since you're affected by the decisions in the ETJ?
I was informed that these particular positions have to be within the ETJ.
No action? Okay, Katie, reapportments, please.
This next one is for the Beaufort County Planning Board reappointment. We have four positions open at the moment. Mr. David Wheelock is in good standing and is interested in continuing to serve. I have not had any applications or volunteers for the other three positions. And again, if you've spoken with anybody.
Make a motion to approve?
Second, second recommendation on the one individual.
Mr. Wheelock, that's where.
I just have a question. We don't have districts for the planning board in Beaufort County. Anybody in the county can serve. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we got the vote on this David Wheelock. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven zero.
Do they, if we have somebody's name, do we just send it to you now? Or what is the process?
You can have them contact me. I also have applications that we do ask them to fill out. Always, you know, encouraging and welcoming of anybody that wants to volunteer for any of our boards.
Okay, we're down to board appointments. You want me to go over those, Katie, or would you like me to run through them? Currently, we have on our board appointments, we have Commissioner Booth on economic development, along with myself. Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee is John Revholtz. Animal Control is Jerry Langley. The Water Committee is myself, Jerry Langley, and John Revholtz. Finance Committee is Jerry Langley, John Revholtz, and Frankie Waters. And then under the RPO TCC is Commissioner Richardson as an alternate. Under the RPO TCA, I believe it's TAC, okay, okay, and I'm on that as a member. And then under Biden Hospital Board, we currently have Mr. Booth, but you're, yes.
Mr. Chairman, my time is up. I can't be reappointed, and I would like to nominate Jerry Langley.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion. I haven't spoken to the gentleman yet, but of course, he knows as much about Biden as anyone that's ever been on this board. I'd like to nominate, if he agrees, Commissioner Richardson.
I appreciate the nomination, but it's a do-nothing board. It doesn't mean anything. They have no authority. All they can do is say yes, sir, when Biden speaks, so I would decline on that basis.
Mr. Chairman, withdraw my nomination.
Okay, all those in favor for Vice Chairman Langley going to Biden Hospital Board, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. Highway 17 Association, Commissioner Waters. EMS Oversight Committee, myself. And the Green Lamp Committee, Commissioner, Vice Chairman Langley. We good? Or we need to vote on all of them?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept these nominees.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven zero.
The next thing I have is the 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting schedule. My understanding that there was one request to change a date.
Yes, please. I will be out of town from January the 29th until February the 9th. If we could move that first meeting in February, or the February meeting from the 3rd to the 10th, that would work for me.
Board clerk? I'm going to be out of town the first week in January. I would like to move to the second week on Monday, if at all possible. That would be okay? I'll be on business and...
Is that the 13th?
Yeah, that'd be great for me if it's okay with everyone else. We don't have to meet on Monday. We can meet, I'll be back on the 9th. Wait, hold on, looking at the wrong calendar. I'll be back on 13th, you're right. Four, yeah, okay.
So we're okay with the 13th? The final thing I'd like to mention is, again, that will throw me off being out of town for the planning retreat. If we can move that up to the 22nd and the 23rd, I believe that's a Wednesday and a Thursday. January is 22nd and 23rd.
I'm okay.
Any more changes? Sure. July the 6th, that's two days from the 4th. When does the 4th come this year? It's on Saturday, so we would meet the Monday after the 4th. Okay, all right, I don't have a problem with that. The other thing, just for informational, is Labor Day is when this year? We got September the 1st for a meeting. Oh, okay, all right. That was all, I just didn't want, just wanted to be sure we weren't conflicting. Is there a motion to approve the amended?
Mr. Chairman, we approve the amendments of these scheduled meetings.
We have a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven zero. Mr. Aligood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At the recent strategic planning session, the board members in attendance discussed county infrastructure needs, including the county jail. After some discussion, the board members in attendance agreed unanimously that the jail was a problem and directed the county manager to put an item on the December agenda to appoint a jail committee to further discuss the matter. That item is in front of you and for your consideration. Thank you.
Question. What is the jail committee going to do?
It's supposed to take a look at what possibilities we have. What can we do? What kind of money are we going to end up spending on the detention center? What can we do with neighboring jails? Just look at the possibility and look at the numbers. I would suggest that we'd have a committee set up with three commissioners, and then we'd want some folks from the law enforcement. I'd also like to see some, a member from the judicial sector of the market. And if we need to pull in somebody from finance, that's fine, to just run some numbers and just see where we are and what options, what options does Beaufort County have?
Would that jail committee be looking at alternatives to reduce the number of people that are in jail?
That committee should be looking at, should not be limited to anything. They should be looking at anything and all that's available. And again, that's the reason I'd like to see someone from the judicial side come in and just see what's going on and what we can do.
Well, I don't have a problem with that as a proposal. I don't want to see this committee become a committee, the purpose of which is to build a new jail, because that's really not what it's about. And to that end, I have a statement that I would like to read at the proper time, whether that's after the motion is made or now, whatever the chairman sees fit.
You can go and read it now.
All right. This, keep in mind that I've had part of my questions answered in this first paragraph. I have deep reservations about the real purpose of a jail committee. If its purpose is to wiggle and worm to justify the building of a new jail, I am opposed. If its purpose is to genuinely study the criminal justice system in order to reduce the need for jail cell space, then I am for it. During my 23 years as a commissioner, I have witnessed many bad Beaufort County decisions that were championed by pressure groups. Those groups were the same almost every time. They are some of the elitist service clubs. One of these... One of these is the Noon Rotary Club, which claims to be a service club, but is actually a political club. Others are the chambers of commerce, along with quasi-government organizations, who just want to do good things with your tax money. I fear these same groups believe the propaganda that all our criminal problems will be solved if only we had a new jail. Witness the belief by the Beaufort County Health Department that spending more than $1 million of tax money each year on prisoner health will somehow induce them to give up criminal behavior. Some of the do-gooder projects pushed through by these groups are the road to nowhere, US-17 bypass on the west side of Washington. It is useless to our citizens. $192 million wasted. Placed on the east side, every citizen would have benefited. Two, a $33 million school system with an $8 million overrun, total $41 million. About 40% of the classroom space is not used and never will be used. They told us new school buildings would make students learn more. The gifting of our $100 million hospital system to a nonprofit that pays the county nothing and charges some of the highest rates in North Carolina. The destruction of the Bellhaven Hospital Building by the illegal use of our building inspector, backed up by the majority of the commissioners, along with the do-gooders. The illegal hiring of outside attorneys to figure out how to gain control of the hospital trust fund, that money has now been spent. On what? Can you tell me? The board never voted to hire those attorneys in open session. Without a plan and a strategy, the building of a new jail will only increase the cost of incarceration in Beaufort County. Doubling or tripling the size of the jail without a management plan will only double or triple the size and cost of the really bad management problems we now have. What do the taxpayers get for their $25 million for a new jail? Just how many people do we need to jail anyway? I shall vote against the new jail committee. However, if you insist on forming a jail committee, I want to be on it.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, oh, I had some conversation with you maybe a year ago, and kind of gave you my take, and I'd like to share this. I would like to see us have a committee made up of nine people. Three from the Board of Commissioners, three from what I call the stakeholders. And when I say the stakeholders, I'm talking about the people that are involved in it on a daily basis, that have to deal with it. And then the last group of three, I'd like to see someone from the, that lives inside of the city limits of Washington, one person that lives on the south side of the river, and one person that lives on the north side of the river from the community that does not live in the city limits of Washington. You know, it's an issue that's been talked about. It's an issue that, when I ran, I voted, I ran opposing the jail being moved to Chaco Vanity, a new one. But as we, you know, continued to spend money sending prisoners to outside of Beaufort County, and as we continued to spend money on maintenance, I think that, you know, long term, we've got to, we've got to come up with a different plan. And I would like to make sure that we have people on there that's got a vision and that our taxpayers, that have expressed to me that they know we need to do something. We can't go into this jail committee with the idea that we're going to build a jail, and I don't think we can go into it with the attitude that we're not going to build a jail. But it's time for us to at least explore some of the things that Hood's talking about, or Commissioner Richardson, as well as trying to make some kind of long-term decision on where we're going. But we need, we need people that are involved every day, seven days a week or five days a week, but we also need people within the community that are business leaders, that are proven, that understand the purpose of planning and the purpose of having some kind of long-term strategy. So I'll support up to nine, but I would caution us in trying to select those people tonight, because I think, I think we need to reach out and come up with the right people to serve on the committee.
We should choose the commissioners tonight?
Yeah.
No problems. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll speak. I was there at the Strategic Planning Committee. I agree, we have problems with the jail. We're spending a tremendous amount of money housing them offsite because of a problem we've had with the doors for going on a year now. And I'm glad we're getting that rectified, even though it has cost our county close to a quarter million dollars extra, possibly more. A lot more, yeah, a lot more, sorry. But that's something that is being rectified at this time. We didn't do any, take any votes during that meeting. So, I mean, our manager feels that there's a unanimous consent that we have a problem. I think we all agree that we have a problem. I will agree to support a jail committee, providing Hood is on it. If you can guarantee me Hood's going to be on it, because Hood has done more to keep the population in that jail down than any of we other commissioners, and for a long period of time. He's made a tremendous difference. He was the first one that understood we had a problem with the doors and sought remedy for that. So as long as I know that Hood's going to be on that to lend his voice, I will vote for the jail committee, if you can guarantee me that right now.
I can't guarantee it. I'm telling you right now.
Continue. I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend three people, commissioners, to be on there. Vice Chair Jerry Langley, Frankie Waters, and Hood Richardson, Commissioner Richardson, I'm sorry. Be the three commissioners that sit on that committee. A lot of, rest of us is going to be very involved in watching, see what's going on so we can learn from it. But I think it's time, and I agree with Commissioner Waters, it's, we need to dive deep in this thing, there's, and see what we can, what we can do to get some help and stop wasting money. Commissioner?
I think the first, first other person you need to put on is Mrs. Christina Smith.
Christina, thanks for volunteering.
Commissioners deny.
I mean, I didn't want her left out of the loop. I mean, she's, she's in charge of the buildings and grounds, and she's, she's doing, overseeing the work that's being done right now, because I, I know we can get carried away into naming people, so I just wanted to make sure she was already in.
Since you done that, let me name a few.
Are we, are we through discussing, are we ready to vote? Oh? The three commissioners, what we're voting on at this time? Yes, there's a motion for the three. Correct. We'll do one at a time, if you like. Yes.
Would it be appropriate to ask the three commissioners to come back to the, to the board with a charter? At the next, what the scope of the study is? Okay. No, Jerry?
The scope of the committee, you mean?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I thought the manager had pretty much, I mean, the chairman had pretty much laid that out.
I don't have a problem with that, I think we just need to put it in writing.
Okay. Well, it will be in the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be in the minutes. The scope of the committee, you can, she can call it that in the minutes, the scope.
Okay.
Any of them? All those in favor? We're voting on the committee, the three members of the committee.
You're just voting on the three members of the committee, not the formation of the committee?
And?
I'm on record as saying I'm voting against the committee. So I need to know what I'm voting on.
This is the committee, the three members of the committee.
You're voting on the people to go on the committee?
Mr. Chairman, I have a problem with a commissioner that basically is saying he's opposed to having the jail committee and wants to serve on it. That's a, that's a real conflict.
Mr. Waters, I agree with you 150%.
Now, if Commissioner Richardson will back up and will agree to go in it with an open mind, and we explore all the possibilities, then that's fine. I have no problems, because he does. I mean, he's dug deep in it, and he's been involved in a lot of the discussions. But if he, if you're going to have that attitude, then I'm not going to vote for you to be on the committee.
Yes, you may.
Okay, I don't think there's anybody that can say I haven't had an open mind on the jail, because I've dug into every corner of this thing that you can dig into, and looked at it everywhere you can look at it, and what I've advocated all along is a round-robin approach to the jail. Just building a new jail is not going to solve the problem. It's going to increase the expenses tremendously. So I don't think I have a problem with my credentials on that. And it is unfortunate that in politics, we find ourselves voting for and against things. I'm voting against the committee for the reason that if things turn sour and head south, and we wind up with a managed, controlled committee with pre-concepts, I'm not going to be on the side of voting for that. So I don't think there's anything at all conflicting when I say I'm voting against the committee, but I want to be on, the formation of the committee, but I want to be on it. You just need to wrap your mind around it, Frankie.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Well, I think it's a public meeting. He don't have to be on the committee. And who did I know for a fact, Commissioner Richardson, I know for a fact, you not going in with an open mind. You hadn't had an open mind about nothing we done.
I take that as a personal offense. You're judging me for something, and you know you're lying. You know it's not true.
Well, I'm not going to change it, and you know I'm telling the truth.
Doesn't bother me, the record's clear.
Yes. What I'm going to do, this time, I'm going to appoint, to pull you off and put John Rebholz on there as replacing you as the third commissioner.
Would you mind explaining to me why?
That's, that's what I just, I decided to appoint.
arbitrarily.
I mean, we wanted to make sure, you're just like me, I'm going to go to every meeting, just like we had the planning retreat, I'm going to go to every meeting, but I think we need some, we need to have an open mind. We're here to see what we can come up with. We're not saying we're going to build a jail tomorrow, none of that. We're just going into it with an open mind.
Well, I'm going to survive if I'm not on this committee. That's not a problem at all. But what I see happening is what I've alluded to in the public statement that I made here. These, a lot of these things are rigged, and that's why this thing, if this thing turns out to be a rigged committee, I'm glad I'm not going to be on it. So, you know, you guys may think that you're playing games with me over this, but I can assure you, there's an election coming up, and this jail is going to be a big part of that campaign.
John, would you accept that nomination, the appointment?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Detective.
Okay, you are appointing Commissioner Rebholz? Are you nominating him or appointing? Okay, I'm, I guess I'm going to have to look at our rules of order, but I think in the past, you had to nominate, and we vote on the members of all committees. I don't think the chairman has that power on this committee, on this Board of Commissioners. He may, things may have changed since I've been gone from the commission.
I've raised this issue before, I've been here 23 years, and show me in writing where the chairman has the power to appoint anybody. They're nominated from the board, as Stan says, and they're voted on by the board. You have no appointed powers.
Okay, I'll withdraw it. I'll open nominations, replace Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Chairman, did we ever vote on the, on the original motion? Yeah, the three members of the committee. So we need to, I make a motion, we form the committee, the jail committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All of them?
Question. Form what committee? You've talked about two or three different committees now. Are you forming the committee that Frankie proposed that has nine people on it? Are you forming the three-person commissioner committee, or what are you doing?
We're looking at the formation of a nine-member, eventually, committee to look at the jail.
Yes, Brian?
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest a, maybe an alternative, if the board would, if the board would first take its lead on members that you would like? I think you've come to a consensus that you want three board members on the, on the committee. If you could come to a consensus on who those three would be, and then vote on that, and then you could vote on the committee itself with the direction that that committee come back at the next meeting with a dedicated charter of what exactly it's going to do, and its recommendations for those remaining members on the board, if that would be something you might consider.
So you want us to come up with nominations?
I'm just trying to help you get through this process.
I'll open it up, the nominations, as that's...
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Hood Richardson to be on this committee, so I'd like to vote for it, but I'm not going to if he's not on it.
You got my motion already on the floor?
For the...
To do a jail committee made up of nine individuals.
And we have a second? We got a second? All right, all of those in favor, raise your right hand. All of those opposed? Did y'all vote? You voted for or against, I couldn't see your hand. Okay, so five, two. Thank you. Now we need nominations to go on that committee?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Hood Richardson to go on that committee.
Any other nominations?
Frankie, I nominate Frankie Waters.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate John to serve on that committee.
Any of them?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Jerry Langley.
Stan?
I've already nominated Hood Richardson.
You got your light on there. Any more nominations? Oh, we got nominations of, how many people we got? We don't leave it to them.
The original motion was for nine people. It wasn't specified who those nine people would be, so I don't know what to do.
We don't have to have...
You can't have four commissioners on the committee.
No, because that's a quorum.
No, that would be a legal meeting.
So, yeah, you have to, out of the four, I'd go through and choose who votes for who.
Yeah, I think you're voting on three commissioners.
Correct. But we have to narrow the four down to three.
All right, all of those in favor, you were nominated, right? For Jerry Langley, raise your hand. All the, all right, we got, what, four? Five?
Five.
All of those for Frankie Waters? Five. Did you, did you vote for John?
I'm voting for, I'm voting for everybody.
Okay, okay. And who was the last one?
Hood.
Hood, and all of those are for Hood? So, all... Okay, Stan, you're on.
Beaufort County citizen Ray Leary came to me and discussed what is going on in Washington, DC, the aberration of rule of law that has become a mess, and I think we all recognize there's a problem up there. His idea, and my idea as well, after he came to me, is that this board commissioners should take a stand, considering that all government is local, all politics is local. And let's face it, all that's happening in Washington, DC right now, it's pure politics, and nothing is getting done because of it. So, without further ado, I'm going to ask that this board hear private citizen, Beaufort County citizen, Ray Leary, and we come forward, Ray.
With the chair's permission.
Good evening again. This is a resolution that's been drafted that we're asking the Board of Commissioners here to approve. Resolution to request the suspension of the impeachment of President Donald J. Trump by the United States House of Representatives. Whereas the Beaufort County Commissioners of the great state of North Carolina emphatically support the United States Constitution, and duly believe and champion that Article 1, Section 2 provides that the House of Representatives shall have the sole power of impeachment, and Article 2, Section... and Article Two, Section Four of the document provides for the impeachment of a United States President for conviction of treason, bribery, or other high crimes and misdemeanors. And whereas the Beaufort County Commissioners unreservedly support those aforementioned constitutional provisions, understanding that impeachment of a constitutionally elected president is a solemn act and know that before a United States President should be impeached for treason, bribery, or other high crimes and misdemeanors, that accused president must have unquestionably committed one of those described crimes. And whereas the history, in the history of the United States government's history of 45 presidents, only four of those presidents have been subjected to an impeachment inquiry. President Andrew Johnson, Richard Nixon, Bill Clinton, and Donald Trump. Only two presidents have been impeached, Presidents Andrew Johnson and Bill Clinton. Richard Nixon resigned before impeachment. And whereas also in the history of these four impeachment inquiries, two involved actual crimes, President Nixon and Clinton. Two did not, President Johnson and Trump. Whereby, in the case of Andrew Johnson, he was an unelected president, unlike President Donald Trump, who is extremely electable for a second term, whose support has only increased during the faux impeachment inquiry of 2019, conducted by Intel Committee Chairman Representative Adam Schiff, Democrat California, a man of high partisanship and questionable character who despises fairness and due process. And whereas the Beaufort County Commissioners stridently believe that the act of impeachment of a constitutionally elected president is an instrument of profound consequence designed by our founders to be exercised in only the most extreme circumstances, certainly not as a partisan instrument to remove a popular political foe that these democratic socialists in control of the House and the 116th Congress despise and are publicly sworn to act as the organized resistance to Mr. Trump's active endeavor to better govern the people of these United States. And whereas in the history of our republic, this current exercise of an impeachment inquiry in search of a crime is the only one of these four aforementioned impeachment inquiries that was not bipartisan in political nature and that if President Donald J. Trump is impeached by a majority of Democrat socialists, the Republican-controlled Senate constitutionally charged with the trial of this president could summarily dismiss or allow trial where there shall be due process, fairness, and all manner of witnesses called. Unlike the sham inquiry in the People's House, these charges will not be prosecuted. Therefore, be it resolved, the Beaufort County Commissioners do hereby humbly beg the House of Representatives leadership of the 116th Congress to suspend the possible impeachment of President Donald J. Trump and allow the political process or a presidential election within the next 11 months to become the remedy to remove this president or not, either of which would be the exact will of the people of this constitutional republic. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr.?
I shall continue. Thank you, Ray. I appreciate that. Stand here for just a moment, if you don't mind. I make a motion that we accept this resolution and vote on it. With Ray, you did submit to me a list of people. I lost it as well in my email. If you can come up with that list again. Once this passes, we can send this to the people.
I can do that.
Thank you very much. I'm done.
Can, can I ask one, one question? Commissioner? No, I don't need one. Has the Beaufort County Executive Committee of the Republican Party endorsed this resolution?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you.
I ask a question. Why would we need the Republican Executive Committee to endorse this? Is there a need for that or is that just a curiosity? There's, just to ask. There's no reason that you ask. It was a random shot.
I, I have no problems with the resolution. The only thing is, in the last paragraph, I would recommend that we take the word humbly beg and we change that to ask. I don't like the idea of begging for anything.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have a problem with that. I will amend my motion to that extent.
I will amend my second.
Any more discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. All of those opposed?
Just one, Katie? Katie, I saw some errors in here. I don't think my copy has some of those errors. I mean, maybe you copied it. I don't know if you did or not. Okay, okay, I'm going to get you a clean copy. Okay, thank you. There, these errors are just technical errors. No substances are going to be changed.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Langley?
I, I think it would be fair and honorable if you would note that the two Democratic Commissioners did not vote in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
Okay, I would ask the county engineer to come forward, Ms. Smith, and tell us where we are on jail repairs and water meter replacement progress.
Good evening, Commissioners. The update for the Beaufort County Detention Center locking system upgrade, the submittals are currently being reviewed by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Construction Section. As a reminder, Department of Health and Human Services received the submittals on November 4th of this year. I spoke with the project architect last week and at that time, he stated that he had reviewed the submittals and had forwarded the information to the engineer for his review. The engineer plans to review our project either by the end of this week or the 1st of next week. When I spoke with Mr. Chris Wood, the chief jail inspector today, he said that the office is aware of our situation and of the timeline. Due to current staffing shortages, project reviews are often delayed. Regarding the Beaufort County Water Department AMI project, the mass meter installation was completed as of November 27th of this year. Currently, 13,453 meters have been installed. Of those 13,013 meters are actively being read in Census Analytics, which is a software program that is associated with the smart meters. The readings are able to transmit and billing is currently being done through remote reads. All of the base stations have been certified and commissioned and are operating in MOM mode, which is an acronym for middle of the minute. It's basically on demand. So in the office, the customer representatives can go and pull a meter reading from the office. However, only of the 13,000 meters that have been installed, only about 5,000 of those meters are reporting consistently in that MOM mode. So at this time, Ferguson as well as census technicians are troubleshooting and reviewing the network system. Again, that's standard for installing a system and they're going through and troubleshooting it to make sure that it's working as it should be. Overall, installation is well ahead of schedule because the original completion date was June 30th of 2020. So again, we are reading meters remotely almost six months ahead of schedule.
I have a question. You said 5,000 and so are in the MOM mode. The other 7,000 are being trouble shot or?
They're, they're working through the network and going through and doing that. We're still able to read the meters. They're just not being, the information is not coming through as quickly. Basically, there are two different types, a net and then the MOM mode, two different modes. All of the meters are functioning on the basic mode, so we're able to get the reads that would come in at least at a minimum of every three days. But we're not getting the higher level readings currently consistently because again, they are installing the network and they're going through and making sure and making sure that it works appropriately.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson, Brenda Hamilton?
Brenda Hamilton, the next thing I'd like for the manager and the chief deputy to tell us where we are on getting information. Yeah, starting over, I'd like for the manager and the chief deputy to tell us where we are getting information on Brenda, Brenda Hamilton death.
Microtrace still has the evidence that we submitted to them. They've gone through several layers of testing and there's really no update on any findings or anything since the last meeting. Our guys are in contact with them weekly, every other week, just to try to make sure that, that things are moving along, but we just don't have anything back as far as their findings or report yet.
Well, things moving along is becoming an issue because it won't be long until we've been into this thing for a year. So it's, you know, it's kind of dragging.
I understand the concerns on that. I will say that, you know, and as my experience in law enforcement and forensics is that this pace is not slow. And I'm not going to, you know, speak or try to do too much to defend Microtrace, but they are world renowned in their field. And I, I would say that they're going to be as methodical as they can and try to do it right because their reputation is on the line if something is found later about someone else. So, so I, I just try to urge as much as I can as far as patience, as far as this goes. And that's from somebody who really doesn't have, you know, any stake in Microtrace. It's just I do have some experience in dealing with companies that are tasting, that are testing forensics.
Well, I gather from what you said, the fact that Microtrace is aware that we have an agreement with Florida, University of Florida, to take a look at this when they finish with it, they're probably going to go slower than they normally would go in order to make sure nothing new crops up.
I wouldn't throw slow as part of that, but I would say, yeah, knowing that somebody else is going to be looking at your work, then I would say that they're probably going to do everything that they can to get it right the first time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Richardson.
I mean Commissioner Waters.
Chief Rose, have we, have we ever had a chance to review the photos that were taken by the North Carolina Wildlife Commission at the scene that morning?
I've seen an email since the last meeting and this time, and our investigators are trying to make sure that we have seen everything that has been taken. Our, our investigators feel confident that they have, but just trying to make sure that that is absolutely the case. And, and we haven't received any information that there is any evidence out there that we have not seen, but we are trying to make sure that that is the case.
I, I would, I would ask that if there's any, if there's any of those photos that we can send to the University of Florida when we finally do, that we, we try to get those from the Wildlife Commission because once they got there, I understand they were taking a lot of photos. By that time, Mrs. Hamilton had already been removed from the scene, but they spent a lot of time. And, you know, there may be something there that would help the University of Florida.
Where all of the information in the case file would not be released to the public and probably will never be released to the public, the idea is that the University of Florida will be able to take a look at the entire case file, which should include the information that was gathered from Wildlife. If you would remember that, that initially that investigation was being led by Wildlife, that we were assisting them. And then there was a flip within that first weekend. So we should have all the information that we took as, as well as Wildlife, but, but we are making sure of that as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do good. Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, flood maps.
Well, I'd ask the manager to give us an update on where we are with our flood maps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just one update for you. As you're aware, the letter of final determination goes out December the 19th of 2019, in a couple weeks. We did receive an email from Mr. Randy Munt, who is with North Carolina Department of Public Safety. And he has scheduled a, a meeting with the local flood plain administrators. That's our flood plain administrator, as well as the COG and Aurora and the City of Washington. I think the COG handles everybody else. That meeting is scheduled for December the 11th at 9:30 in the morning in the county administrative conference room. And the purpose of that meeting, he says it will last about two hours and we'll go over the new state model ordinance, highlighting both the minimum changes necessary as well as any higher standards and updates you might want to include in your ordinance. So this is the close-up process to make sure that they explain all the changes and that we have our ordinance in place and correct before and adopted before June 19th of 2020.
Mr. Chairman, in the past, some of those ordinances, when they've come out, have been pretty useless. We need to get that ordinance well before we vote on it so we can read it and look at it. I mean, we've had the mangrove thickets and a whole bunch of other things that we don't even have come through these ordinances and we need to read it and streamline it.
I think that it'll run through the planning, the planning board to review and then come to the commissioners and we'll make sure you have plenty of time to see that as well. And the board is certainly welcome to attend that meeting on the 11th, if there are any questions you may have. I know he's planning on having that model ordinance there for, for available, but I think it would run our regular process and they come to y'all and we'll certainly get it to you as soon as they get it.
Brian, you want to talk about strategic planning meeting report?
Yes, sir. Be glad to. Members of the board, I, I just kind of wrote it up based on, Mr. Emery had sent me his notes and, and I kind of plagiarized a little bit off his notes. So I've written it out so that I'll make sure I get it all. This was the strategic planning session overview. On November 21st, 2019, the board of commissioners met for the purpose of conducting a strategic planning session that would help identify and note the issues and objectives of the county for the upcoming year and beyond. The session was facilitated by Mr. Neil Emery, outreach associate with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Mr. Emery advised the board that strategic planning was one of the most important activities a board of commissioners can do. Commissioners were asked ahead of time to complete a survey developed by Mr. Emery that was designed to identify major issues faced by the county in the following areas: education and job training, economic development, infrastructure, and county service priorities. Board members in attendance were Commissioner, were Chairman Evans, Vice Chairman Langley, Commissioner Booth, Commissioner DeThridge, Commissioner Rebholz. Commissioner Waters was out of town visiting family in Texas for Thanksgiving, but provided his survey to Mr. Emery in advance. Commissioner Richardson did not attend or participate. The session started with the county manager providing the board an overview of the accomplishments the board had completed over the past several years and an update on the projects that were ongoing. Mr. Emery then facilitated a discussion with the board around the following topic areas: education and job training. The board discussed its desire to help create a local economy that would provide job opportunities for young adults who would like to remain in the county after their education was completed. It was noted that Beaufort County is currently ranked well above average in the amount of local dollars it dedicates to public education. The board discussed workforce development strategies, including expansion of career and technical education programs, and the need for coordination and education of the governing boards involved in these efforts to make sure that all services are maximized and provided the resources they need. The board further discussed the importance of developing and maintaining positive working relationships with the Board of Education and the Community College Board of Trustees. Economic development. The board discussed resources needed for job training and expansion of both new and existing industries. It agreed that the lack of access to broadband service has become a critical problem in Beaufort County and in rural North Carolina. The board agreed that supporting local and state efforts to increase broadband services were critical for location and expansion of businesses and for providing educational opportunities to students in order to compete in today's economy. The board expressed its support for continued aggressive recruitment of new businesses coupled with assistance to existing businesses that seek to expand. Infrastructure. The board discussed that one of its major obligations is to maintain and develop county facilities and other capital infrastructure. These assets and improvements include both general fund operations and enterprise operations. The board reviewed its recent positive step of dedicating one cent of the tax levy to a capital reserve fund. The board discussed and agreed that due to existing potential liabilities for staff and inmates, along with continued maintenance and off-site housing costs, the construction of a new detention facility should be studied to determine the long-term needs of the community. It discussed the solid waste enterprise fund and the current committee work to determine the appropriate number of solid waste collection sites and the future solid waste disposal needs of the county. The board discussed the water enterprise fund and the need to identify and plan for future needs in the system. It further discussed the tightening environmental regulations and challenges faced by many of the small municipal systems to maintain operations and that these circumstances may lead to an overall discussion among providers as how a joint strategy. may lead to an overall discussion among providers as how a joint strategy could help meet those challenges for all involved. Human resources. The board discussed that its greatest resource in providing efficient and effective services to its citizens is the dedicated and professional staff. It noted that for this resource to remain strong, the board needed to provide its staff with a professional environment and compensation competitively for the work provided. It discussed the prior pay plan that was developed but not funded and how this has potentially impacted employee turnover and caused significant challenges for numerous departments. The board discussed developing a way to implement the pay study and create a plan to promote retention of employees. Mr. Emery then led a discussion about civility and noted that each board has a reputation across the state and that this reputation can have a positive or negative impact on business and staff recruiting. The board agreed that staff and other board members deserve to be treated in a professional and respectful manner in accordance with the dignity associated with the Office of County Commissioner. This mutual respect not only helps build a strong and effective county team, but also displays to taxpayers and potential county investors the manner in which county government is conducted. Of the follow-ups. Number one, seek ways to maintain open lines of communication with other boards, education, community, college, and municipalities, such as ongoing meeting schedules with board representatives to help recognize the challenges faced and the opportunities that exist to work together to find solutions. Number two, continue to support workforce development and CTE educational programs. Number three, support state and local efforts to expand broadband services. Number four, continue economic development efforts and seek opportunities to assist with business startups. Number five, establish a committee to reexamine the concerns related to the detention facility. Number six, continue to develop policies that ensure enterprise funds remain financially stable and self-supporting. Number seven, initiate discussions with local municipalities to determine if joint strategies may provide an opportunity to meet the ever-increasing challenges of water and sewer delivery service. Number eight, work to implement the new pay plan and develop a way to promote retention of employees. And number nine, treat staff and other board members in a professional and respectful manner and commit to holding each other accountable for appropriate conduct and for abiding by the board's rules and procedures as well as its code of ethics. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I make a motion adjourned.
I'd like to wish everyone here a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. I need a second so we can go home.
Second.
Second. All of those in favor, raise your right hand.